They're asking the board to select and take a vote as well. And this is sort of a standard thing that goes on with these developments to make sure that we get a credit for the affordable housing.
So it's just asking the board to affirm my signature on it as well as having the board sign it so that they'll accept it at the land court.
Madam Chairman.
So, Slap McCallagano.
I'll offer a motion to have the manager sign the document.
The issue is that the manager already signed the document and now they're coming back to the Board of Selectmen and they're want, they're not sure whether they need a signature just from the chairman or from all the board members. Town council, I reached out to him. He said we could sign a document. He agreed that that, it's, it's, I've never seen anything like this before where the town manager signs something and then it comes back. There's some sort of regulatory agreement on the affordable side. But it seemed to me with the back and forth that we were getting that she wasn't sure whether one signature was needed or all five signatures were needed. Then she questioned why the town manager needed to sign it. And what I said was it's very important that somebody is here representing you so you could explain it to the full board because it seems like there's a bit of confusion. And the woman who sent the email, which everything is in the packet, said that their attorney was going to come here this evening. That's why I'm a little surprised that there's nobody here in attendance.
Do you want to leave it on the table for now?
I would, I would, would you make that a motion?
I wouldn't table it. I think we're into a deadline now to get these credited.
No, just till tonight. Just for tonight, in case someone shows up.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. We're actually going to have another one because one of the other developments has a small parcel that's registered land.
Sir?
So we're going to be in the same thing probably at the next meeting.
Excuse me, sir? Sir? The gentleman who just walked in. By chance, are you here for 860 Broadway?
Yes.
Very good.
Perfect timing.
Yes. Could you, could you please come to the podium and give your name and address and explain exactly what is needed this evening? Thank you very much. I don't believe that. There's no traffic in Saugus.
My name is Paul Feldman. I'm an attorney at Davis, Mommon, De Augustine in Boston. I represent 860, the owner, the developer of 860 Broadway, the apartment complex. And pursuant to the permits, 25% of the units have to be affordable. And in order for units to become affordable, you have to put a deed restriction and you have to follow the regulatory requirements of the state for them to qualify as affordable units. The State Department of Housing and Community Development, which name has just changed, I don't remember the new name. It used to be D H C D, but it just changed a couple of weeks ago. They have a regulatory agreement which the developer, the town, and the department enters into to make sure that these 25% of the units will be properly affordable units to the residents who rent there. And the standard form agreement was actually drafted by the state agency. It's entered into by, as I said, the developer, the state agency, and the town. And as I understand it, it's already been signed by the town manager pursuant to his authority. It's been signed by the developer and it's been signed by the state agency. The land that constitutes the development is registered land with the land court. The land court has specific recording requirements. And so when the regulatory agreement was presented to the clerk to record, the land court said, well, we would like to see that the select board of Saugus authorized entering into the regulatory agreement so that when we record it at record, we know that it was duly authorized to be signed by the town manager. Legally, I'm not sure the land court clerk is correct that that's required. I think as your town council has advised me, the town manager has the authority to sign the regulatory agreement. But you don't fight City Hall, as they say, so you don't fight with the land court. And if the land court says they'd like to get a vote of the select board authorizing the regulatory agreement, I think town council thought that made good sense. That was the path to go. And he prepared the vote that's presented to you tonight. And I was just here to make sure that it happened so I can get this regulatory agreement recorded at the registry. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
We don't have a vote in front of us, so is the vote, there's nothing written up. Is the vote to authorize into the regulatory agreement for 860 Broadway, is that the correct verbiage you're looking for?
Yeah, I actually left my cellphone in the car, but I could pull up the email from the town council that prepared the document that you guys should have.
The town council?
Madam Chairman, yeah, I would just take a, make a motion that you are authorizing and agreeing and, as well as authorizing the manager to sign the agreement and then have the board, I think, sign the agreement as well as the manager, I think will satisfy the land court.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, that's fine. And I can, if you want to give me five minutes, I'll go back to my car and I could read the vote, but it's pretty similar to what was just said.
And just, I think we talked about it before through you, Madam Chairman, we're going to have this issue with another development that has just a small portion that's in land court. And I think rather than have to go through this with the land court again, that we would just bring that up at the next meeting and take the same vote for this other development so we get credit for the affordable housing.
So we have a motion on the floor, seconded by the chair.
Madam Chairman, just a quick question of the manager's.
Of course.
Scott, when we take the vote, but when we actually sign, when we actually sign the document, do we have to go to Ellen's channel because everything else in here is notarized? Do we have to go to Ellen's office to sign it or do you have a notary or do we even have to have it notarized?
I would, I would just take the vote and then we can figure it out in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I actually went through with town council whether we should prepare signature pages so that the select board also is a signatory to the regulatory agreement. And the town council thought it was not necessary and it's not what the land court asked for. So I think the vote is good enough. And tomorrow, the city clerk can, I could physically get the piece of paper of the vote to the city clerk and they can indicate that it was adopted and then I could just bring that to the registry.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. It was seconded by the chair. We were in discussion phases. Is there anything else to be discussed? Seeing none, all those in favor, a Slap McCallagano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Good night. Sure, we could do that, sure. Do you, do you want us to take the recess now?
No, it's okay.
No? Okay. I'd also like to mention that this meeting and all our selectment meetings are recorded. Speaking of recording, we have our SCTV update. And although we know who you are, if you could please give your names and addresses for the record.
Maureen Whitcomb, 212 Essex Street, apartment 103 Saugus.
Sue Palumba, 73 Appleton Street.
The board wants to thank you for coming in this evening. We did receive some correspondence regarding the director. As would really like to have an update on the director, an update on the person, Mike Pelletier, who I believe recently, he was working, can you hear me okay? Who was working 10 hours a week and he is going to be resigning as well. Would just like an update of where you're going, what you're thinking of in terms of filling that position. And then afterwards, if the board members have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so at the present time, we have Michelle and Anthony, they're our co-executive directors. They're sharing all the responsibility. John is as well. The employees, we've made, we hired Clark. He's part-time, 30 hours, and his base, his rate will be determined on our next meeting. And everyone is welcome, of course. And the board of directors, we are also, I believe that that was also posted, that we're, we'd like to have like a couple of more board of directors. We have Jimmy Alcott that has resigned. And I don't know, is there anything else you might want to share?
Well, we did advertise, Janice did advertise for us, for the cable board. And regarding any hires or fires, they do need to be approved by the board of selectmen. Maureen?
That's why we're coming forward now. Anthony, Michellea, and Michelle Fox, who you've worked with both, we would, we have discussed it with them and they gave, they presented the idea to us. So what they did is they took all the executive directors' jobs and they have kind of, because right now we don't have one, they have kind of split those jobs and would each take on certain responsibilities along with doing their current positions. So they would like to see if it would be possible for them to work as co-executive directors or coworkers at that point. If it worked out and if it was allowed by you guys, we'd like to keep it for that way. If not, we will post for an executive director's position. Clark is, right now Clark is a per diem worker. He would be coming on as a part-time worker, under 30 hours a week, to help fill in and make up for Rachel being not here, obviously. The other things is, as of January 9th, which is our next board meeting, Donna Sodello and Mike Pelletier will both be resigning and will be there, that will be their last day. So we are looking for more, more board of directors and also somebody to work in the office as the secretary or as a receptionist type thing and do some of the paperwork that goes along with that. So we are, we are in the process of trying to find somebody to fill that position.
Slap McChiccolini.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, thank you for coming in. So I have a couple of concerns, the only, nothing to do with capability of the folks willing to step up. I am not a huge proponent of splitting duties and adding responsibilities and not having one person ultimately responsible as an executive director. I have extensive experience in the industry, nonprofit industry. Typically, co-directors is not something that ends up working out.
Right.
It might be a short-term solution or a short-term fix, but it's a Band-Aid.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not going to fix, the station needs an executive director. It needs a leader. And we need to make sure that whomever that person is, they possess the skill set necessary to divide those duties. It's one thing to say, I'm going to do this and I'm going to do that, but it's another thing to know that they can do this and do that. Also, when you have an administrative person, an executive director running the station and other people don't share those responsibilities, they have the capacity to do the taping and recording at all the various meetings and, but the administrative burdens can weigh them down and might shortchange us on our ability to get adequate coverage at all of the things that are going on in the community.
That's why right now with the executive director's position, she made a list, Rachel made a list of everything that she did. Both Michelle and Anthony are still going to be keeping their, their positions in order to fulfill, their fulfillment with all the recordings. So what they are doing right now, and it's, it's a very slow time period, which is great until the beginning of the year, they are taking over their responsibilities and that's how they divided them up.
So can I?
It's not, it's not going to be a long-term fix.
I would suggest you don't make it a formal title.
Okay.
I would, I would, if anything, I would just say interim.
Mm-hmm.
If you're going to do, I'm only saying this is one member of the board, I'm not speaking for my fellow board members. I would not make it a permanent, I would make it a temporary.
Okay.
And then if there's, because you're also going to be mindful of budget to actual on your original operating budget. So you have to see how, I'm sure there's going to be an increase in pay.
Yes.
For them, for the added responsibilities and adding the 30 hours a week for a temporary employee. So we need to see some type of a projection of what this is going to look like when you're looking at your new budget. Or, you know, your new forecast, I should say. And compare that to where you were on the money that was appropriated. You're halfway through the fiscal year now, you know, almost halfway through the fiscal year now. So want to make sure you're not going to go off the rails there. But also, I think that as long as both employees understand that this is not a permanent solution, it's very temporary in nature and the plan would be still to advertise. It doesn't mean you're going to not prevent them from applying for the position. If, you know, if they choose they want to pursue that. But I think you need to set criteria. What are you looking for, for that executive director position? Advertise for it and make sure that you have, you know, the people, you have the right, you set the skill set and then make sure you interview people who have the skill set.
Okay.
You don't take the people that are already existing and hope that they have those skill sets.
No.
Their hearts are in the right place, they're trying to do right by the station, I get that, which is commendable. But I'm just concerned that we have needs of X and we need to make sure whomever is going to be the long-term solution has all of the skills we need to fill X.
Okay.
All right? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Madam Chairman.
Slap McCallagano. Thank you, through you. Good evening. So in January, you're going to be losing two more direct, board of directors.
We will be losing one board of directors and a secretary or an administrative assistant.
So, so on the, the board of directors, as of January, when Ms. Sodello and Mike, so it's just you two that are left.
Us.
And you're going to, you need three more on that board, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to make sure everyone knew the number so they would apply.
Yeah, but Mike isn't a board member.
Mike Pelletier?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, no, he's the, he's the finance.
He was a board member and then moved out of town.
And then moved out, right, okay. All right, so you're going to be looking for three and you're going to have just the two original ones that are on there coming back in January.
Now, Janice has, has put an ad in it and what Michelle did is Michelle has also put an ad on the station channels.
Okay.
Just looking for additional board of directors if anybody was interested. You could be watching a sports show and, and have the little ad come up because they had a 30-second space and just thought maybe somebody might be interested and apply.
Right, okay, thank you.
The bylaw says that we could have, they could have anywhere from three to five.
Right.
So, you know, if we, even if we got one more for now, but I'm glad that you advertise, I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you advertised to Janice and, you know, hopefully maybe somebody watching at home might be interested in volunteering. It is a volunteer position. But I appreciate everything that you both have done and what you bring to the table.
It is, it is a good board and I, I hope somebody out there does, you know, take it seriously and, and say they want to help, you know, commit and, and add to the community because it is a community-based project.
Mm-hmm.
I have a good candidate. Janice used to be on the board.
Yes.
You want to go back on, Janice?
Oh, yeah, it was a great time. Yeah. We were careful. I'll tell you later.
Slap McChiccolini.
So I guess my question for tonight, are you asking to go, move forward with that interim plan? And can we be assured that you will not be exceeding the approved?
Monetary?
The approved monetary?
No.
And if you, confidentially, you can do it under separate cover, but if you can send the board a summary of what the proposed increases would look like for the positions and do before, when you had Rachel, what the salaries were for each person, and then do post with this proposed change, we could make the vote tonight contingent upon us verifying the compensation amounts won't exceed what's already been approved.
And we also need to approve Clock being hiring as well.
Correct. So I'd like to see, it's, it's kind of hard to do it now because we don't know rates of pay and.
Sure.
Things like that, but I assume.
We were planning on doing that on the January 9th meeting at the board of directors meeting when we had Donna there, so that would be a vote for all three of us. I can't see us with the money that we have and with what, what the salary was for the executive position. It is a little, we were looking at a little bit of an increase, not much, just to help get them through this tough period of taking on additional work, but not making it, you know, thousands of dollars type thing. I can't see it going over at all.
Because you have both Brian and Rachel.
That's why we have an excessive amount of money in the budget right now.
And in terms of the administrative position, is there anyone that you can think of that might fill in?
We will reach out back to Joanne, who was the former administrator, and see if she would be interested in possibly coming back. She has, she has expressed an interest of coming back and retraining somebody else with the necessary paperwork and payroll. It is very simple. It's not something that should take 10, 12 hours a week, but at the same time, she was a physical body there in the morning where possibly they could work from like nine to 12 and work for three or four hours a day and be there so that if the people, Michelle and Anthony had meetings in the afternoon or in the, at the nighttime, that the station coverage would be there. Because we are, we are supposed to be staff between nine and five.
Madam Chair.
Slap McChiccolini.
Can I make a recommendation that you make the decision you need to make in your January board meeting?
Yep.
In setting rates of pay and doing what you're going to do, then come back to us.
Yes.
And have us ratify what you're looking to do.
Yep.
I think that would make more sense.
Sure.
So we can see it on paper, we know, and we're not kind of, I feel like we're throwing darts right now.
Yeah. We, we want to do what is correct. We want to follow the bylaw, the bylaws.
Yeah.
We also want to go according to the contracts between the board of selectment and Comcast.
Yeah.
So that's why we're presenting that to you first. We have not, I mean, obviously Michelle knows about it now, but we have not presented it to them.
Yeah.
At all. This is kind of like what we've worked out to see if there would be a possibility.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman.
Slap McSerena.
Just to follow up on what Selectmen Chicalini said, and I think I mentioned it to you, Maureen, a couple of weeks ago. For the last couple of years, we, we were approving one lump salary for the whole operation. Back in 2021, I went through my file cabinet, it's in, in 2021, we had job descriptions of every position plus their salaries. I think it would be helpful for the board if we seen that again instead of just giving us $300,000 in salaries. I appreciate that.
And we'd like to, we'd like to do that and give that to you.
Yeah.
And if there's anybody out there who's an accountant, we'd love your help for the board of directors.
Yeah.
Because we could definitely, you know, with the budgets and everything, and I know we can always, always come to you guys, but being, you know, short-staffed, it kind of makes it a little difficult.
Maureen, that's all you have to do is just go back to 2021 and look at what they did back then and the information's right there for you.
Oh, yeah. No, we'll.
If you need a copy, I have a copy for you.
We'll definitely get that for you.
And if we can be receiving copies of the minutes every time you have a meeting, that would be very helpful as well.
Yep.
Are there any other comments to the SCTV board?
Thank you for your hard work.
Would you like those minutes just sent to Janice every, every month?
Yes, if you could send them to Janice and then she'll forward them to the rest of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much for coming in. I appreciate all of your work.
Thank you.
The next item under correspondence is a report from Lieutenant Arconis. The board members have been getting lots of calls regarding the Essex Street-Vine Street intersection. We've all gone through it. We've all seen how incredibly difficult it could be either to take a left from Vine Street and to get onto Essex Street, or if you're on Essex Street, you take a left onto Vine Street. And we wanted to ask Lieutenant Connas to come. He did some research, went down there and to explain to not just the board, but to the residents, his ideas and if there's a way that we could try to alleviate that. So thank you very much for coming.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Manager, Janice. On December 4th, I got a request from the board to look at that intersection. Anybody that lives in Saugus or travels that roadway knows that the, that section of roadway is extremely difficult. There are, that area is, is, and there's exits from Route 1 on two sides of Essex Street. There's also an exit on the other side of Route 1 for people coming up by what used to be York Ford, I guess it's now McGovern Ford. So they come across the top of Essex Street. So basically, three, three travel lanes come together right there. So the first thing I did was, with Lieutenant Giorgianni's help, we reviewed the department records for the last six years, back to January 1st to 2018. At the intersection of Vine, or Essex Street and Vine Street, we have had a total of 10 collisions. Five of those, so exactly half, were people that were struck from behind while turning left onto Vine Street. So they came across Essex Street or from one of the ramps and they tried to make a legal, it is a legal left turn. So that while they were waiting there at the, at the intersection, cars, for cars coming up Essex Street, they were struck from behind. The other collisions at that intersection all involve people turning from Vine Street onto Essex Street going the opposite direction or from Essex Street onto Vine. Virtually every collision involved in the intersection. There was one that involved, someone struck a guardrail, but that was a, an outlier as an OUI investigation that didn't involve it. So virtually half of them involved a, a collision from behind. So I thought initially that maybe there would be enough space to put a dedicated left turn lane there. Keep in mind though, you, you still have that ramp from where the former Santoros is, Walgreens and that Dunkin' Donuts and that exit off Route 1. There's, I don't believe there's enough space for the people to get out into the, around that turn lane. And I don't, I don't, I think the proximity to the state highway is really the problem. That intersection is very close to Route 1. So my second thought was perhaps we could reconfigure the intersection. But doing that, moving that, changing the outline of that traffic island and stuff, would involve engineering costs, it involves a lot of money, I think. And I don't think that is necessarily the best or most appropriate use of the taxpayers' money right now. You know what I mean? 10 crashes in six years. Now that's the ones that we booked. That's not the, the minor crashes where people crash into each other and exchange their own information and don't call the police, or the ones booked by the state police. I'm just talking about the ones that we have had right there. If we were at some point able to move that traffic island, it would be able, we would be able to give the people that are turning onto Vine Street more, more sight distance for, to be able to turn so they could be seen. And the other thing is, there, there are stop signs at each of those intersections, at each, not only at Vine, Vine Street, but at, at the end of each ramp. People don't like to see it, but those aren't yield signs at the end of the ramps, those are actual stop signs. So we could enforce motor vehicle law there. Now, the other thing is, I went down there at night, the road is appropriately lit. That road, that portion of Essex Street is, is very well-maintained, there's no potholes, the visibility is good. Some of the crashes though, that occurred maybe at like 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening in July where it's daylight, the, the visibility might not be the same in December or January. You know what I mean? Anybody that drives at 5:00 at night right now, it's already dark. So, but I don't think daylight had, had a problem with it. The road is well-lit. Most of these crashes did not occur in the wintertime. So I think the, the strict enforcement of the, of the law would, would, would be one approach that's a cost-effective way. I don't, I think the engineering costs involved in moving that intersection is well beyond what the town, I think, would want to do. And I just don't think the turn lane, putting in a turn lane, I don't think the road's wide enough to do that.
No.
But I could be wrong and a DPW engineer may have a different idea. I'm sorry, I'm not much help.
Slap McChiccolini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you very much, Lieutenant Connas, we chatted a little bit beforehand. So one of the things I had talked about, understanding that a lot of the accidents that have, that have happened in that location.
Yep.
Are rear-end type accidents where people coming towards Cliftondale off of the highway.
Yes.
With people wanting to take a left turn onto Vine.
Yes.
So my question is added signage, that we could put their left turn here. So people, I feel like people come up on that and don't know where to take the left. I see people try to take it where it comes up.
Yeah.
You know, where it angles off as if you're going to go up Essex Street.
I do.
So I think people pass by it and get nervous, slam their brakes on, and that's what's could be causing part of the problem. So in addition to additional traffic enforcement, if we could do some type of signage that says left turn here and identify where the turn is for you to take, because you have to cross the double line, double yellow, to take that left.
Sure.
So I think if we identify that, it could potentially help people understand that that's where you take the left turn, you don't go up to where it angles out and bang that illegal U-turn there.
Sure. I can find the appropriate sign in the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And if you approve it. And if you approve it, and the manager and the DPW will put up the sign. It's, it's a pretty simple fix. If that, if you think that would help, I'm more than happy to do it.
That would be my recommendation to.
I, I think that's a great idea. I was thinking something similarly. I, I think anything that we can do, I, I think that 10, and these, like you said, the 10 crashes that you know about, not when people are exchanging papers. I can tell you, I don't have any problems coming out of Vine Street, either taking a left or a right, but when I'm coming up Essex Street and I want to take that left, I feel like I'm taking my life in my own hands. It's, I, I find it scary. And if you don't know, as Selectmen Chicalini says, if you don't know where that left is, and you miss it, and you try to, I can see that being very confusing. So I do think signage would help. Any other board members? Selectmen Serena.
Madam Chairman, thank you, Lieutenant Connors, for your hard work on this. It's my understanding that the state owns that section of the roadway. Am I correct or wrong?
They may, the state may own a portion of it, but they certainly don't own Essex Street. My, my suggestion was going to be that if we were to make some radical change there, or put in the turn lane or anything like that, I think you would have to get Mass DOT's approval because of the proximity of that intersection to a state highway, and their off-ramps and all of those things. And the other thing I said about the traffic enforcement, that would only be obviously if the chief of police agrees that we should do that, and it's an effective use of his resources. It's actually up to the chief and the manager about where those resources are deployed, okay? I didn't want to overstep what we can do there, okay? It was just a recommendation for what we could do.
I, I believe at this point probably signage is the best, best way to go right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Connors.
Anyone else have anything to say? Okay. Thank you very, very much for coming, Lieutenant Connors. It's very much appreciated. Right now is our first citizen's comments for the evening. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we're going to move on to continued hearings. Our first continued hearing is Gill Oil Company, 344 Central Street, Saugus. Is there somebody from Gill Oil Company?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Selectmen Chicalini.
So just, just to let everybody know that this hearing came before us. Previously, we did a site visit out there. We asked for additional information while we were out at the site visit. There was questions about the potential for Webb Street, which is the street that runs in between J&amp;M's Sub Shop and Dynasty Upholstery. There's a street that runs there. So we needed confirmation that that street did not continue back into that lot that the applicant is applying to store the vehicle. So we did subsequently receive several plans, including two that were certified, that, and I'll pass this one down because it's a cleaner copy, that in my opinion clearly show that Webb Place does stop at the fence, does not carry through to the parking lot. So I just wanted to state that before we continue with the hearing. And you could pass this one down, because I think it's, I think that's more visible than the one that was printed before.
Thank you. And this hearing is continued from our November 21st, 2023 meeting. So would the applicant like to address the board, please? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your name and address, please.
Kevin Gill, 10 Donner Road.
Arthur Sodello, the owner of Three Party Four, Central Street, Residence is 402 Sherwood Forest.
Thank you. Do you have anything else that you would like to say before the board?
As we stated, everything on the 21st, nothing has changed. I know I met you guys down there for the meeting, and we're just waiting to hear what you guys decide.
And thank you for your patience as we go through this. We just want to make sure we do our due diligence. Do the board members have any questions this evening?
Just one quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Selectmen Riley.
I'm just, was the junkster still, are that the dump trucks and the oil?
They withdrew.
Okay, I want to make sure that they, okay, great.
This is just the oil truck. You have just the oil truck, and then you have like a trailer.
Enclosed trailer.
Correct, a trailer that's there sometimes and sometimes not.
Just one quick question, the drainage catch basin, is that a dry well in the parking lot?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just, I mean, I don't mind allowing the one truck and trailer on the, on the property. I'd like to put a condition on though, that no more, because the Conservation Commission did oppose this based on, they were about, worried about, you know, oil leaking from the truck. And Shute Brook is right, right there. I'd like to put a condition on it that only no more oil trucks can be allowed on that property. I don't mind yours.
Yep. Now, as we state, when we park the truck at night, there might be 15, 80 gallons of that.
I don't know how other board members feel about it, but it is close to Shute Brook there. And once oil leaks in the property, it's going to, you know, I'm, I was formerly on the Conservation Commission, so I'm sort of an environmentalist, and, and they were opposed to your, your location, your truck. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
You explained during the site visit that your truck is pretty much empty by the time it's parked there.
Believe in the morning, we fill it up, we deliver oil to our customers, and then when we get home at night, there might be 50 gallons or so in there.
You've been parking there since 2016, 2018?
About 16, 17, yeah.
So you've been there now for quite some time. The residents did not have, take issue with your truck and trailer being there, and that was important to the board during our site visit.
Yep, I know, thank you.
Are there any other concerns, questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Selectmen Chicalini.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the chair for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Selectmen Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I will make a motion that we grant the request of Gill Oil Company for parking of one oil truck and one enclosed trailer at 344 Central Street in the part, in the lot where identified on the plot plan, the two, the two assigned spots. No additional oil trucks to be parked in that location, and this would take effect immediately.
And that's seconded by the chair. Further discussion, roll call?
Roll call?
It's an S2, yes, please.
Selectmen Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectmen Riley?
Yes.
Selectmen Serena?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chicalini?
Yes.
Chair Panetta?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations to you, and good luck.
Thank you, and happy holidays. Thank you very much.
Same to you, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda was Mass Junk, 344 Central Street, Saugus, Mass. This was also a continued hearing from November 21st, 2023, and we also talked about this particular application when we had the site visit. Today, late this afternoon, we received a letter from the applicant asking to withdraw. With that said, what are the wishes of the board? Selectmen Cogliano.
Do we have to close the hearing first, or just give them a leave? Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to grant their leave to withdraw, without prejudice.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Did you want to take the two-minute recess, though?
It's up to you, I don't need one, but if you.
Scott? Oh, oh. Do you need, do you?
Madam Chair, can we take a two-minute recess, please?
And that's seconded by the chair for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Raising Cains Property Owner, George Nickle Family Trust, Ruta Bica Properties LLC, and Mr. Timothy Gunn, requesting a special permit S2 under Chapter 48, Section 9, and under Section 12 dot D of the zoning bylaws, to allow for the operation of a business with a drive-through window at 799 and 799R Broadway, Saugus, Mass. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam.
Need a minute to set up?
Just a minute.
Take your time.
Rearranging for the, that visibility.
You look familiar. Do we know you?
I hope not.
Nope.
Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Richard Magnin with an office at 194 Central Street here in Saugus, representing both Raising Cains LLC and the George Nickle Family Trust. Here with me this evening, from Raising Cains is Adam Caracci, the Senior Property Development Manager, and also Matt Bowler from, excuse me, Matt Ashley, I did it before, didn't I? You're going to own the company before I'm done. Anyway, Matt Ashley from Bowler Engineering. Also present in the back would be Ernie and Ted Nickle, trustees of the George Nickle Family Trust, the owners of the property. You're familiar with the location of the property, which is the vacant Aldo Furniture Store on Route 1, southbound. I will inform the board that as part of this process, the applicant first met in June with the, the manager and the department heads in a pre-application meeting, as is required by the zoning bylaws, with the, also called a DPRC meeting, in which plans, conceptual plans were presented. Feedback came from the department heads. Revisions were made to those plans. And subsequently, application was made to the planning board for massive plan and site plan approval. The first hearing on that application took place last month and November 16th. They also appeared before the Conservation Commission on November 16th. At the planning board meeting, there was quite a bit of give and take, and the matter was continued to January 4th. But at this time, I would suggest to the board respectfully that it appears that there's a great likelihood that this is going to be approved at that January 4th meeting. At this time, I'd like to turn this over to Adam to give you a brief background about the applicant, Raising Cains.
Thank you. Adam Caracci, 6800 Bishop Road, Plano, Texas, 75024. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me this evening. As Rich said, my name is Adam Caracci. I'm with Raising Cains as a Senior Property Development Manager for New England and the Southeast. We are very excited to be in your community. We've been looking for a location in Saugus for about three years now, and have, have almost gotten there. Locally, we have about four restaurants that are open in the area. We've got one that just opened last month in Methuen, one that opened in the spring in Marlboro, and we've got two in the city of Boston. So we are already in the area. If you're not familiar with it, I do encourage you to check us out at one of those locations. But it's a fairly simple, refined, focused concept, and that's the quality chicken finger meal. So we only sell one thing. As a result, we're extremely efficient with our drive-through operations. We're able to push people through in just under three minutes, from the time they order to the time they're leaving with their food. All at the same time, it's cooked to order because we only serve the one thing. So it's chicken fingers, french fries, Texas toast, coleslaw, limited variety of soft drinks. We even only have two sauces. That's it, that's the entire menu. So it's a, it's a unique concept, largely in the southeast and out west right now, but expanding into this region. For the technical aspects of the site, I'll defer to Matt, but if you have any operational questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Do you want to answer a couple of questions, or do you want to wait?
No. Matthew Ashley with Bowler, 352 Turnpike Road, South Barrow, Mass. So thank you, like Rich and Adam said. I'm just going to give you a little overview of the site here and what we have. So what you see in front of you and what was submitted is the result of all the meetings with the town, with the various departments, and taking all that feedback and putting it into this site plan. So what we have is about a 3,300 square foot quick-serve restaurant with a dual drive-through lane, with a full bypass lane as well. On the site existing right now, if you're familiar with it, it's right next to the Hilltop location, is a vacant building right now, essentially no stormwater or any controls out there. So with the redevelopment and work with conservation and planning and everyone, there'll be a fully up-to-date stormwater management system to capture everything off the site. So essentially, out there currently, there's three curb cuts for the site. That'll be reducing down to a single curb cut location. And you will work your way counterclockwise around the site. So I'll just come over here and point real quick. The order location right as you come up front, which will then go to the pickup window there. It's a quick, high overview, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions the board has about the site. We are here for the, obviously, pickup window, and those are facing the rear of the property.
I, I have a quick question. Typically, somebody has a common vehicular license, or they come at the same time. So you're going to have to come afterwards and get your common vehicular license, because I assume you're going to have tables in your, in your restaurant.
Correct.
And what are you going to be, your hours of operation?
Typical hours of operation would be 10:00 AM to, we start with 1:30 Monday through Thursday, and then 3:30 Friday and Saturday. However, I've seen the restaurants in New England close earlier than that. They tend to just not get as much business up here at that late. So that's where we start. Given it's a fairly commercial area, that's what we would ask for with the Route 1 traffic. But we can, we can work with the town on that.
I, I don't think I heard you correctly. I'm, I'm sorry, the acoustics in here aren't terrific. So you said Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 1:30 AM?
No, PM.
PM?
Right.
1:30 AM, yes.
1:30 AM.
Correct. And I'm sorry, that's.
And then what would, and then you said Friday through?
Friday and Saturday?
Friday and Saturday, open at 10:00 AM, close at 3:30 the next morning.
3:30 AM.
Correct. And Sunday would be the same hours as Monday through Thursday.
I don't think we have anything open until 3:30 AM.
We have McDonald's 24 hours, both of them.
Okay.
So they would need an extended hours permit?
They would absolutely need an extended hours permit.
Yeah. But we wouldn't be voting on that now. That would come through the common vehiculars.
Well, it's just that if we're going to put hours on the drive-through, and I'm, I'm also concerned about an intercom system and how loud that's, how many decibels that's going to be, because I believe there's some residents that are in the back. And then a light shining down, you know, that light will be on, you know, till 3:30 AM. You know, it would have to close when you close, but if you're open till 3:30 AM, you're going to have a light shining down. I'm not sure how that's going to impact the residents.
Understood. And so to address that, there is a wooded buffer between the residence and the restaurant and that wetland area that's to the rear back there. As well, we use a self-attenuating intercom system, so it's going to adjust to the ambient sound. So it'll be just slightly louder than the road traffic, so that they can hear each other over the intercom. And the lights, dim, we can adjust them. But we actually just went through this the other day with our peer review comments. The, the town's ordinance has a limited amount of foot candles at the property line, and we're intending on meeting those. So it shouldn't trespass over the property line into the neighboring.
Selectmen Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so to piggyback the comments made by Madam Chairman, the, the lights, I would. Yeah, so to piggyback the comments made by Madam Chairman, the lights, I would assume, perimeter lights facing into the property, not--
They'd be shielded, yes.
They'll be shielded lights facing in, not to highlight the external perimeter, but more towards the, aiming in towards the drive-through in the building, et cetera, right?
Security lighting for the drive-through in the parking lot, correct.
Yeah. So, to the point that was made by Madam Chair with the S2 permit for, you know, basically here to approve the drive-through, the only concern that I would have is, are we going to, are we here to approve the hours on the drive-through now? And that's, so that's something that I would think we would need a recommendation from the police department to go beyond the traditional hours, like, I don't, I just--
It's 2:00 AM.
What?
It's 2:00 AM.
Right. So, they would need an extension from 2:00 to 3:30.
Right.
We could approve it till 2:00 for now, because that's the latest that we have opening. But then, like when McDonald's came before us, then you get police recommendations for the extended hours, and we could then put forth for the extended hours for the two days to go from 2:00 to 3:30.
I can agree to 2:00. That would be fine.
For now, and then--
For now, yes. And then, once the restaurant is open, we can address and see if it's necessary to go beyond that.
Yeah, I'm sure the planning folks and the other people probably weren't aware that you were looking to go beyond the 2:00 in the morning, because I was just assuming-- I, full disclosure, I went to the one in Boston. My son told me I had to try it. So, I did try the one in Boston, and it is pretty amazing how quick everything just moves in your very organized way, and you get your little tray and sit down, and there's already someone right behind you waiting to sit down behind you. So, but I think that's probably why, they probably weren't thinking this was a, that late of a night operation. So, I would feel more comfortable if we considered for 2:00, and then put forth the rec-- you could apply for the extension, and then we can get recommendations from the department heads for that.
That's acceptable. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Oh, Selectman Riley.
To you, to the applicant. Good evening. I was just curious, would you be looking for those hours to sit in dining as well, or is it just for the drive-through?
That would be dine-in and drive-through, although my experience is that the dining rooms tend to close earlier, and it's just drive-through after a certain hour of operation, usually 10 or 11 PM.
So, that would have to be in the conditions, right? Once we do the extended hours?
They're not coming for a common vix tonight, so they're just coming for the drive-through. That's why it's, we typically do it combined.
Right.
It almost feels like we're putting the cart before the horse, a drive-through before a common vec.
Yeah. But Madam Chair-- To Selectman Riley's point, I would think that if we're going to approve the extended hours, I don't think we have, I don't think we have anybody occupying the restaurant portion beyond 2:00. McDonald's 24 hours is drive-through after 2:00. I just, I would think you'd shut down the, I wouldn't want you to be the precedent setter trying to do, open the restaurant portion beyond 2:00, because I don't think we have any occupied restaurants at that point.
So, Madam Chairman, just, I guess, for hope clarification, I think their main goal now is to get the approval for the drive-through--
Yeah.
--so that they can move forward with the other processes. This, we've, the town and the different departments have met, you know, many times trying to work through, it's a unique site, and they had to make some different changes to their design. Obviously, with the drive-through as a key element, because it's, we asked them to go to a dual drive-through so that we have less backup, obviously, you know, concerns with it getting out onto Route 1 is a, you know, pretty popular establishment, I think, that have you, as the other members of the board have talked about, in, you know, Com Ave, it's a huge site that draws a lot of people, sort of the Chick-fil-A and the different competitors do similar business, and it may wear off a little bit, but people, these are real popular. So, I think that what they're trying to do is get the, the main thing is to get the drive-through approved, because it's one of the approval processes so that they can continue to have the green light, to continue to move forward with the project. I think the hours, Attorney Magnin said they can work out the hours after, and I think take all those considerations of what Kelly's does, and McDonald's, and Burger King, and sort that out, I think, at a different meeting, but at least the drive-through would let them--
Right, but the drive-through, don't we have to set hours?
--move forward with the actual design that they've put together now.
We have to set hours with the drive-through.
Correct. But I would just set them to the standard hours.
Yeah. That's what we were saying, we were going to go to 2:00. Yeah.
Does that make sense, Attorney Magnin?
Absolutely.
And it's my understanding that you're still working with all the town departments, so they said that you've been very amenable, and there were a lot of concerns. I heard the Conservation Commission had some concerns. I don't know whether they, Attorney Magnin, have they all been alleviated, all the--
I did not appear before the Conservation Commission. I think Matt did.
Yep. Yeah, they had some concerns, and they approved the site, and just as part of the order of conditions, they wanted to make sure that any environmental concerns got taken care of from their concerns. Additionally, the landowners have already taken, or taken care of the concern out there, and we have the report that says they've taken care of it. We've submitted that to the town, so they know that it's been taken care of, and then if anything does come up in the future, it's linked to our order of conditions that we have to take care of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, just to reiterate, it is a challenge, for this location, it's a big lot, but there are some challenges with it. There's a pipeline, there's some other things that are there, some conservation, and they've worked through all that. That's what's sort of taken a little bit of time from the different committees and commissions and departments have reviewed a lot of this stuff, and now they're at the point of trying to get the approval for the drive-through to fit the design that's been sort of adjusted for the different concerns that they've been through the approval process. So, this is the next step for them.
And if you, if everything goes the way you want it to go, we vote this tonight, when would you hope to break ground and open?
Break ground in the springtime, and then open end of the year.
Construction takes about 180 days, so if we started in April, that's, you know, pending--
September October.
--mass DOT approval, then, yeah, sometime in October, November. We are a little bit different in that we like to make sure the restaurant is properly staffed and perfect for opening, so we don't tend to get the CO and then immediately open the doors. Sometimes it sits for two weeks, sometimes it'll sit for a month while we are staffing and training, so just to set that expectation. But it would, if it's completed by October, I would expect that they would want the restaurant open by the holidays.
So, as long as it's not like Amazon Fresh, correct?
And approximately, how many employees would you be hiring?
About 125. That includes, it's mostly part-time, but it does include 10 salaried staff employees, full-time.
Very good. Are there any other questions from more members?
Madam Chairman, just a comment. I'm glad you picked Saugus, because Raising Canes is a hotspot with Saugus kids. They flock to the Commonwealth Ave store in Boston, so it'd be a welcome addition to the town. Thank you.
It's only about a 45-minute wait on Com Ave.
That's just to get parking.
It's unbelievable.
It's not, it doesn't take you 45 minutes to get your food, I can tell you that much.
We, my family, we go to the BU hockey games on the weekends, and, you know, it's even worse--
Right there.
--because of the amount of kids and crowd that they pull in, but kids love it. It's, a lot of Saugus kids go there.
College kids, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been in there myself.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
That is seconded by the chair as there's further discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we grant the request for Raising Canes and the property owners, George Nicoli Family Trust, Rudabekia Properties LLC, and Mr. Timothy Gunn, they're requesting of the special permit S2 under Chapter 48, Section 9, and under Section 12D of the zoning bylaws to allow for operation of a business with a drive-through window at 799 and 799R Broadway, Saugus, Mass. As presented on the plan, this would be a two-lane drive-through as presented, and hours would be 10:00 AM to 1:30 AM Monday through Thursday and Sunday, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday.
Any conditions?
The conditions would be they continue to work with the department heads on logistics and on getting final approvals, and then they'll come back to us for common victualist license and extended hours if that's the case.
And that's seconded by the chair as there's further discussion. Seeing none. Roll call, please, Janice.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chicalini?
Yes.
Chairman Panetta?
Yes.
Welcome to Saugus.
The vote is unanimous, five to zero. Welcome to Saugus.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is National Grid. Is there anybody here from National Grid? Okay, so I will read this through. National Grid requesting permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Central Street, Saugus, Massachusetts. Also, permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by its exclusively for municipal purposes. Number 30868147, November 2nd, 2023. Good evening. Could I please have your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is John Jankowski, 170 Medford Street in Malden, Mass. I'm representing National Grid. We have two petitions. The first one is, we'd like to install a wooden pole on Central Street between 590 and 389 Lincoln Ave. The pole is for National Grid, and the pole will be close to the Kent Street substation, and the reason why we would like to set this pole is a monitoring station that'll, monitoring the circuit. If there is, something happens, they'll make some changes, so it has to be next to the substation, and it has to be no transformers, no switches, or anything like that. It's just a piece of equipment that sits on the pole, it monitors the circuit.
May I ask a question? On the second, we're talking about the first one right now, we have to take them individually, but on the second one, in the write-up that you gave to our clerk to post, and that was advertised, it says Endicott Street and Central Street, at the intersection of Endicott Street and Central Street. Endicott Street, there's an intersection with Lincoln Ave, not Central Street.
Right, it is correct.
That needs to be read advertised.
Okay.
And we did call up Vincent, Vinnie, our town clerk, I'm sorry, our Selectman clerk, spoke with him and explained that we cannot bring this up, well, we can mention it, but would have to continue it, because it was advertised improperly, because the information given to her was improper. On the first one, we don't have a plan in front of us. Is it correct the way it is written? Is it truly Central Street where you're pointing it, or is it Lincoln, because we didn't have a map?
So, I don't have that. I have this one. Okay. So, this is-- No, he just gave it to me, Jeff.
So, is it P81? Is--
We have his copy.
Does this one go, I'm sorry, could you please come in? I apologize, I just can't follow this. Okay.
So, this would be the proposed one, right?
Is this, is this the one here, the Central Street one? This is not the one off of Endicott Street.
Right.
This is this one. So, this is correct, the way it's written on Central Street? Okay, very good.
All righty.
Thank you for the clarification. So, we're on the first one right now, the one on Central Street. Do board members have any questions for National Grid?
Did we, I apologize, I thought we were continuing both, but did we get confirmation that they're all paid up?
Jeff, I can't hear you.
I know, and I've never been accused of being quiet, so--
I don't know. I don't know. We'll probably find out January 8th when they want to reschedule.
Okay.
So, they have some time to pay up.
So, we could make this contingent upon settling? If we vote on the first one, we can make a contingent upon settling any unpaid balances?
Right, absolutely.
And, Janice?
Yes.
I don't see any recommendations from the DPW.
I still can't hear you.
I think I was just asking her that, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
I don't see them, I didn't see them either. You might want to wait to get those recommendations. I know that there's been a disconnect with National Grid and DPW and engineering in different departments, not this department.
It was, it's important for us to get recommendations from the DPW, so, and we don't have any of them. And I did think after our clerk spoke with Vinnie or Vincent, her contact, we thought we would continue both of these. Since we have to continue the second one anyway, and somebody has to come back, I think it would be prudent for us to, if the board desires, to continue the first one as well, so that we can get the recommendations, and then we can follow up on any fees that are due, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I've just got one quick question. I noticed the last couple of years, usually the poles are about 100 feet apart, but National Grid has been coming in over the last couple of years and wanting to put a pole in the middle of two existing poles, cutting the distance down to 40, 50 feet. I know we denied one on Denver Street, but National Grid went and put it up anyhow. What's the reason for all these poles, the more poles you want to put up now?
Well, this existed, well, the proposed pole, excuse me, it's there to monitor the circuit, which means nothing can be on the pole, no transformers, no switches, anything. So, those poles and the existing poles, they're in essence too crowded. You can't just move one over here, one over there to get a clean pole. The poles are so congested in that area.
Are the two existing poles, are they in good condition?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should continue this until we get a copy of the map we just received tonight and the information of DPW.
What he said was, he just saw this map for the first time, and he'd like to get recommendations from the DPW. So, he would like to continue it as well.
I'm having problems hearing you guys, when I was sitting down here.
No, no, it's, the acoustics in here, unless--
And we just put in a brand-new system. That's the best part. It's supposed to improve all the acoustics, and it's working fabulous.
All right, very good. So, I will--
Now, we can't hear anything.
I will redo the petition, and the next petition will come here, and I'll get in touch with the DPW.
Okay, we do have to take a formal vote on continuance, if that's the desire of the board. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wants, who came specifically to speak on this? Okay, so, there's only a couple of people in the audience, so I feel comfortable with, if that's the wishes of the board. So, would one of the board members like to make a motion?
I'll offer that, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. And that is seconded by the chair as there's further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. That one's continued, but I, but now I have to read the second one into the record. You had, it said 7:20 PM. National Grid is requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Lincoln Ave. National Grid to install one JO pole on Lincoln Avenue, beginning at a point approximately 55 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Endicott Street and Central Street. When you change that, you're going to change it to Lincoln Ave. Installing one new pole. Also requesting permission to erect and maintain poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked, Lincoln Avenue, Saugus, Mass. And permission to lay and maintain underground-- underground lateral cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connecting with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. National Grid agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for the municipal purposes. Number 30868148. So we already discussed this. What are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serino.
I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Do you want to continue?
Yeah, we'll continue it. Should we close the public hearing?
No, we'll just continue it.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We continue it.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Thank you. Our next meeting is going to be held on January 8th. It's a Monday night. So Janice will put you on the agenda if we have enough time, because we do have to repost the second one. If there's enough, do we have enough time in between from now until then?
Are you talking January 8th?
Yes, I am.
No.
There's not enough time?
I don't believe so. What do we have now?
It's the 19th.
I'll have to check the calendar.
Twenty-nine, it was like 12 days plus.
Only have to have it twice at once, right?
Yeah.
It was 19 days. 19 is okay.
It's 19 days away, so.
So we should be okay. So we're going to put, we'll put both of these on our January 8th meeting. It'll be held in the same place at 7:00.
Very good.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a report from the town manager. Mr. Town Manager.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? Am I on mute?
Can you hear me?
I feel like I started a Zoom meeting. Can't hear myself. I have a few appointments here and some reappointments. So the first I have there in your packet is a reappointment to the Commission of Disability. I bring before you the name of Marian Dewicki, 19 Stone Street. Will be reappointed to the Commission of Disability for the town of Saugus upon your confirmation. Reappointment will take effect immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025.
So we need a motion to confirm this appointment?
So moved, Madam Chair.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chicalini?
Yes.
Chair Panetta?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero.
The second reappointment is for the Commission of Disability. I bring before you the name of Mark Curry, 26 Birch Street. Be reappointed to the Commission on Disability for the town of Saugus upon your confirmation. This reappointment will take effect immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026.
Thank you. We need a motion.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. And that's seconded by the chair. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chicalini?
Yes.
Chair Panetta?
Yes. Motion is unanimous.
Next reappointment is for the Board of Health. I bring before you the name of Maria Tamagna, 7 Zambora Street. Will be reappointed to the Board of Health for the town of Saugus upon your approval.
Can I have a motion?
The appointment will take effect immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. We need a motion to confirm, please.
So moved, Madam Chair.
And that's seconded by the chair. Further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chicalini?
Yes.
Chair Panetta?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is unanimous. Mr. Town Manager.
This year I have a new appointment to the Board of Health. A gentleman pre-qualified that had reached out to me some time ago. I spoke to the gentleman. He was interested in trying to get involved. He's retired, and he was interested in the Board of Health or the conservation if anything had opened up. We didn't have any openings at the time. He's just submitted, I think, Monday. His name is Joseph Durant. He's pretty qualified, one of the most qualified I've had apply, but he's retired. He has 35 years at working at Mass DEP. He's an environmental engineer. He has a bachelor's degree in biology and a master's in environmental engineering from Northeastern. And it looks like he has experience actually working with local boards when he was with the DEP, and also represented the engineers as a, as their rep in the Massachusetts Organization of State Engineers and Scientists. And so I bring before you the name of Joseph Durant, 22 Parker Street. Will be appointed to the Board of Health for the town of Saugus upon your approval. The appointment will take effect immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025, and this would fill one of the positions that we now just recently have vacated.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Do I hear a motion to confirm?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chicalini?
Yes.
Chair Panetta?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is unanimous.
The next one is I bring before you a reappointment to the Board of Health. I bring before you the name of Joya Chicalini, 383 Central Street, Department One. Will be reappointed to the Board of Health for the town of Saugus upon your approval. This appointment will take effect immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion. We reappoint Joya Chicalini.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Selectman Chicalini.
I'll be abstaining from this vote. Joya's my sister, so I think that could qualify as a conflict.
I couldn't hear you.
So we have a motion to confirm?
He's abstaining.
He's abstaining.
Yeah, we have a motion to confirm.
You have to speak into the mic.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Yes, I got it.
Yes.
Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
Yes.
You're abstaining.
Abstaining.
Yes. Chairman Panetta, thank you. Four to nothing. Thank you. Four and one abstention.
Okay, got it.
The next appointment is a new appointment, I think, well-known by many of us that decided to come out of retirement, reached out. His name is Robert Long. He's a former planning board member, former selectman, town meeting member, former moderator, and he was interested and showed an interest of coming on to the planning board. So I bring before you the name of Robert Long, 26 Bennett Avenue. Will be appointed to the planning board for the town of Saugus upon your approval. This appointment will take effect immediately and expire on December 31st, 2028.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion. We reappoint Bob Long. He was on the planning board years ago also, I believe, so.
That's correct.
I'll make that letter of motion.
So we have a motion to confirm. Seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chicalini?
Yes.
Panetta?
Yes. Motion is unanimous.
And that'll give us a full complement now on the planning board as well.
That's good news.
We've advertised these positions, all this, and as you guys know, even for the boards that you are trying to fill, it's a struggle to get people to volunteer. So it's nice that we have some people that have been involved and some newer people. So hopefully that will help them with quorum. I think the last one I have is a reappointment to the Board of Health, and I bring before you the name of Geraldine Gatchell, 17 Greystone Road. Will be reappointed to the Board of Health for the town of Saugus upon your approval. The reappointment will take effect immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those, roll call.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Excuse me. Selectman Serino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chicalini?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Wow, we could hear you.
We can hear you.
Motion is unanimous. I want to thank everybody
Sitting here all night trying to listen to you.
For their interest in helping our town and volunteering their time and efforts. It's very much appreciated, and all of these people, I'm sure, are going to either do or continue to do a great job for our town. So thank you for bringing these names forward, Mr. Town Manager. There was one other person who was interested in the Commission of Disability. They sent us a letter of, sent you a letter of interest a while back. Melissa Hilton?
Okay, I'll take a look. I don't have that, and I didn't see that, but I'll take a look.
We need more people on this commission. I think that should be a nice add.
Madam Chair, through you to the town manager.
Of course.
There was two others actually last year as well that sent in applications. I'll remind, I'll send you the names. Excuse me, their names. They haven't heard back yet.
Okay, perfect. We'll put them on.
Is there anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
That's it for this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have members' motions. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have no motion tonight. Actually, I would like to thank Jimmy Alcott and Mike Pelletier for their service on the cable board. I know they're both going out this month, and I just want to wish the public, my board members, Mr. Manager, and Janice our clerk, a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. It's Selectman Cogliano. Perhaps we can send both Jimmy Alcott and Jonas Adello and Mike letters thanking them for their.
That would be great. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Do you heard that, Janice?
I can't hear you.
I think he said you were going to.
Janice, we'd like to send letters thanking people for their service on the cable board.
We're going to put a speaker right over there in your table.
We're going to put you right in the middle of us over here.
Yeah, come sit over here.
Just agree and nod.
I'm going to get some sign language lessons.
Selectman Riley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'd like to wish my board members, Anthony, Jeff, Deb, Mike, Scott, Janice, and their families, everyone that's here, residents at home, a wonderful holiday season, Merry Christmas, a happy and healthy 2024. And I just want to thank all the things that have been going on in Saugus. I'm sorry that I haven't been able to attend, but the Wreaths Across America, everything that's been done. We have Santa Claus coming, so I just want to say thank you for everyone that volunteers in the town and gets these things done, because without them, we wouldn't be having anything. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Serino?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank the Parsons Robey Chapter, or the Daughters of the American Revolution. They did sponsor the Wreaths Across America event at Riverside Cemetery Saturday. The event honors our veterans' grave sites, and we lay wreaths along the, on their grave sites. This is, I believe, the third year sponsoring this event. We were there last year, and it was very, very cold. This year, we had, it was a beautiful day, and it was a great turnout of volunteers, and I want to thank all the participants involved in this special event. And finally, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holiday season, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Serino. Selectman Vice Chair, Jeff Chicalini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to piggyback on Selectman Serino and Riley's comments about the event for Wreaths Across America. So this year, we were able to do 550 wreaths, and there's about 1,200 graves. They're running a special right now. If you sign up for next year, they'll match it on Wreaths Across America. So if you buy your wreaths now, whatever you buy, they'll match, so that we got a better shot of getting to the 1,200.
That's great.
I just saw it on Facebook today that they said that you can go on there and they'll, the Wreaths Across America program is matching it, which is pretty cool, because it would be awesome if we could cover all the graves. And we went from 300 to 550 in one year, so that's a pretty big jump, but it'd be nice if we can do that. So I thought that was, that was great, and thank you to all involved in that. Also, I want to just give a quick shout-out to our Pawwana cheerleaders. I know the U8s and U12s went to Florida and competed.
Yep.
And the U8 girls actually finished third in the country, which was fantastic. U12 girls, very competitive as well and did great. So hats off to the cheerleaders for a great job. And I just wanted to give kudos. Mr. Manager, if you could pass along, I know I've had quite a few calls with leaves and trees and trash and branches and everything else, and people are already saying that stuff's cleaned up, and just kudos to the DPW folks. If you could let them know that I sent over my thank yous. I appreciate that.
I will. The good news is that we don't have, knock on wood, any sanding or salting events in the future until, right now, in the weather, until after the first of the year.
Yeah.
As of right now, so.
We like that.
And you know that the two or three inches is the ones that's the problem.
Right.
Causes more havoc and most complaints.
And the first one of the year is the worst, because everybody forgets how to drive for the first month or so. And just a Happy Holidays to everybody. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and I hope everybody's healthy and safe, and all my fellow board members. I hope you have a great time. Corinne, I'm glad you're feeling better. So we missed you, and it's glad that you're back and smiling again. So that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Chicalini. I think you all received a copy of the selectmen's budget. I'm not sure if you had the time to take a look at it. If you're fine with going with what we had last year as a budget moving forward, we can do that. If you do see anything that you want to change, our next meeting is January 8th. I did let Wendy know that we were meeting tonight, and we'd probably be going in with the same budget, so.
We may have to replace a couple of chairs. These chairs are, I think these chairs are getting a little tired.
I second that motion.
Yeah, we can use that out of, you know, we have other budgets for that. So whatever we need to adjust, I can adjust through the process.
Was he referring to me?
Next, I just want to mention the beautiful menorah lighting we had on Thursday, December 7th. I'd like to thank the members of the congregation of Avos Shalom, Kanta Craig Mail, Pastor Bob LaRoe, our town manager, Jeanne Meredith. Jeanne actually stood behind and she ran behind everybody just to make sure that it was plugged in. So, and as well as my fellow board members, for everybody's assistance, because I think it was just a beautiful ceremony, and I appreciate everybody who attended. I also want to shout out to the Parsons Robey Chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution, for their beautiful and heartfelt wreath laying ceremony last Saturday. Some of the board members mentioned the Christmas Eve parade, which includes Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus, and they'll be coming through Saugus on Sunday night, Christmas Eve, starting at 6:00 p.m. They're first heading down on Hamilton Street to Seville and Elm Street, and the parade's last stop is from 8:50 to 9:00, Central Street heading to Saugus Center. And please check the local papers, as well as Youth and Rec Facebook pages for exact timings. I want to thank the town manager, all the town employees for all of their hard work. Thank you to SCTV. They're always there to film our meetings. I want to thank Mark for coming to all of our meetings, as well as Charlie for covering them, and it's important that people know what's going on. Communication is key, obviously, with the board. And lastly, I want to wish my fellow board members, each one of you, Anthony, Jeff, Mike, Corinne, a very happy and healthy and safe Christmas season, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year. Same to you, Mr. Town Manager, and your family, and of course, our clerk, Janice Gerose, and Mark, who's the last person. Oh, wait, we have you over there, too?
Who's that?
Bang, gone.
Who's that?
And all the residents at home. I wish you a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, whatever you celebrate, and a very happy and healthy New Year. I'm really looking forward to next year and what we're going to do for our town and the goals that we set in moving our town forward. With that said, we do have one last citizen's comment. Would you like to come and address the board? Thank you. Seeing none, would somebody please make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded by the chair. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, everyone.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Good night, everyone, and Happy Holidays.